Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes of the the meeting, the previous meeting, the joint meeting and then our regular meeting on July eighth? And the special meeting on July twenty fifth? Tom made a motion. Jim is going to second that motion.
You need to be a little.
No, it's not like that, so he's not.
All, all those in favor? Six oh. We have a report of the collections as submitted. Does anybody have any questions in regards to those?
You don't yell at him, there are questions except one thing, I think as we, as we go through our budgets, I think we need to keep looking at our. Keep looking at our claims, but if nobody will make the motion, I'll make the motion.
Tom made the motion, can I get a second?
My second.
Denise, second. All those in favor?
Yes.
Six oh. A review and acknowledge the treasurer's bank reconciliation and monthly comparison report, did everybody have a chance to take a look at that? Did we have any questions or concerns? Hearing none, can I get a motion?
Yeah.
Jim? Can I get a second, Denise? All in favor?
Hi.
Six oh. Review and acknowledge clerk's monthly report for June and July of twenty four, along with the admitted report for May of twenty twenty four, has everybody had a chance to look at that? Can I get a second? Well, Tom? All in favor?
Hi.
Six oh. Okay, transfers. W eleven to sheriff's incentive pay two thousand dollars. Operator part time five thousand, operator overtime five thousand. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about that? Hearing none on that, radio dispatch travel mileage to IDAC a thousand dollars, postage consulting fees two hundred fifty seven dollars and fifty cents. Longevity says security sixteen thousand, as for the commissioners ambulance paramedic overtime sixty thousand. Any questions or concerns in regards to the transfers? Hearing none, may I get a motion? May I get a second? All in favor? Six oh. We're gonna table the pause and clause contract. We discussed it before, my concern is that it was stated that they don't cover Hillsborough. Don't cover Hillsborough.
Oh.
And we were told that they do not cover Hillsborough, which ironically sits in Fountain County, so that's a Fountain County contract. So let's table it and we'll discuss it when Dudley is back with us. Colleen, would you like to talk about the additions?
I'm going to need some additional. Pending. In the non-reverting E nine one one dispatch, that's the portion of going county cases. We need eighteen thousand two forty nine ninety seven to cover the computer maintenance. We also need seven thousand in part time. And then county general commissioners, we need fifty thousand for social security. That is mainly due to the raises that was given. And then in covered bridge repairs and Q bridge, I need another fifty thousand to cover the amount that the council give to the citizens for the K mail bridge, we didn't have enough appropriated to cover those invoices. I haven't advertised these yet, so we can't vote on them, I just wanted to let you guys know that that is on the table. We are going to need probably more in our health insurance fund, so I didn't know if you wanted me to go ahead and advertise that as well.
I want to hear your thoughts on health insurance.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping two hundred thousand, what do you feel like, two hundred thousand will do it. We, we still have to build some of the outside agencies, we need that separate funds, but. You know, it's a, it's a hard estimate because everybody's trying to get everything done at the end of the year, so the cover their. Anyhow, that's what we're anticipating.
Can you run the amounts down again?
Eighteen thousand two forty nine ninety seven for computer maintenance. Seven thousand in part time. And that's out of fund of twelve twenty three, that's nine one one for Warren County. And county general commissioners fifty thousand. And then two hundred thousand for health insurance. And Kimbridge fifty thousand for Batesville.
Colleen, did you say that fifty thousand commissioners was in fully the raising?
Yes, the social security increased or obligation increase and we gave those raises, there's sure. I think that will sit in online. So I will get those advertised for the next meeting. But I just wanted to let you know where we were at.
Do you want to talk about the APC?
Oh, yeah. Also, we may need, I don't know what you want to do. On APC for short in attorney fees. I have an invoice here and that needs to be paid, I only have twelve hundred dollars left, the invoices for twenty two ninety eight. There are some solar things in here that I need to bill, crossroads and dolphin four. But in the meantime, I need to pay Mr. Minett his, his fees. And then also a consulting fees. I, I need money there. For consulting fees.
The, the two, two.
Plan commission.
The plan commission, all this.
Uh huh, that's all plan commission.
And we've rushed it a long time, didn't we? Plan commission budget.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we, we've expended all in consulting fees.
I think we need to look at these individually, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not willing to, to jack on them as a as a kind of legal motion for all of that, I want, I want to break it down and look at them.
That, that's fine, and I, I will, we need to sit down, I, I would like to have a couple of council members sit down with me and Roger and go over these and get some explanations.
Absolutely.
So two volunteers. But Tom and you want to, Jim?
I, I guess I can since I represent the council on APC.
So Jim and myself, right?
And
And I will get Roger to set up a date and tell me.
We have that breakdown of invoices, it's, it's here in my file somewhere.
For Roger?
For the, for Roger's invoices. Wait, wait, I didn't break down Roger's invoices.
Yes, and I, I've gotten some since then. And I will get all those, we'll organize for the meeting.
And we'll let, let Kelly know when we're having that meeting also in case they want to.
Okay, we gotta be careful.
Yes.
To have more than three, so.
Yes, you're three.
And then go ahead and get other invoices. I also have some unpaid invoices, I still have twenty one thousand five eighty three to Baker Tilly. That was on the bond performance, we did sign a contract. I have that here, that needs to be paid, no funds to pay it. So I need to ask for an additional if you guys are agreeable to pay that. I mean, I, I don't have it, the only place that we could possibly pay for it out is our funds without an additional. I don't know if you want to do that, otherwise it's gonna probably have to be seated or county general commissioners. So, and then I have more. I know pause and clauses are issue. We only have fifteen hundred dollars left, we don't have enough to pay the next quarter. Ritter Strategic, I have an invoice for nine hundred dollars, an additional nine hundred dollars on the standard operating procedure policy. I need to pay it, I didn't know if it was okay to pay that out of art funds.
What was it?
Ritter Strategic for nine one one, the operating procedures handbook.
How much was this?
This is nine hundred dollars.
And you said Bender Tilly was twenty two thousand?
Twenty one thousand five eighty three and ten. And then of course we have the outstanding convoy invoice. And Mr. Conway from Archer has been in contact with me. I've had at least two phone calls and two emails from him, he is one paid, he said he has subcontractors that he has to pay. And he wants to know today what your thoughts are on paying that invoice. I think he's he's getting a little impatient with this.
And I have two people who doubt me, probably three total times. Not him, just, I don't think, it's two different people.
You have people. I think, I think that's all I have as far as I'm paid. And I have probably said if anyone needs.
And what was archituras amount, does he have an amount?
Well, Architura is part of this envoy. Yeah, it's included in that, let's see, there's eight. About a hundred thirty thousand for Archer out of that. It's, it's on this, broken down here, that sort of, okay.
Well, there's just some discussion on the, the date in which some of this was committed, of course, was it out of date, we set a date when everybody had to have their bills in.
Right.
Yeah, I saw July in there.
I think now the invoices dated July tenth.
Yeah, invoices dated that.
But the work was probably performed prior to the May thirteenth date.
And the forty eight thousand, yeah, that's the forty eight thousand that came in July the tenth.
So we'll table the APC or I guess not table it, but we'll take a look at that, like Jim said, we need to split it out possibly and some of it, it's probably gonna be questionable. The Baker Tilly, that was the bond performance.
On scenarios on.
Yeah, which we're not really out money there because the scenario will be similar if we do it later. Barry Ritter, the nine hundred dollars is on that nine one one situation, is that for that to put it in the annex?
No, it's, it's the standard operating procedure policy is what that was for, which needed to be updated.
That's right.
I don't know, is Dana back there? Dana, do you have anything you want to say to the council on that?
SOPs was operated by nine one one for the state of Indiana, they noted that for the past five years later, correct? So payments, I guess it was in his contract to do that, like they wasn't tied.
No.
It was, no, yeah, is there any transfers?
For the council. It's wherever you are, we paid out though. Right now we're up to, with this nine hundred dollar invoice, it's up to seven thousand seven hundred twenty five on the SOP.
So what do we owe that total? Just nine hundred or do we owe?
The rest has already been paid, you mean, the rest has already been paid, none of that seven thousand?
Yes, yeah, we've, that's what we've expended minus the nine hundred, because it needs to be paid.
So we could pay that out of council or ARPA. What do you guys think?
I don't know, that's Oracle, but you see the thing, that one's the nine hundred one.
Yeah.
There's not anywhere transfer from nine one one, anywhere, I don't think. We have to pay.
What do you think?
I don't think the nine one one updates to operating are Oracle funds, I think that's a part fetch.
Yeah.
So if there's not money in another nine one one account that could be transferred, I think we have to pay that.
She has no. Well, we're down to bare bones in those budgets, so.
What'd she say about that five years, I kind of missed that.
It hasn't been updated for five years.
Okay.
And it, it needs to, wait, things change and.
Yeah, I agree.
Can I get a motion to pay the Barry Ritter bill for nine hundred dollars out of the county council fund? Jim, Jim will second that motion. Can I get a vote?
Hi.
Six oh. Jim?
Thank you, just last minute. Let's see how they're, the next meeting is on the spin, I think we have that issue, yeah, we just tried to exchange it on that, so that's the science page. That's a big new slide, so I can just lay it out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The rules of our, with them stretching it.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah.
Got you.
So we've been on all the invoices, thank you.
Uh, what about Baker Tilly?
Yeah. How long, how long does that Baker Tilly go, if we had that, months or something, at least we've gotten others.
Yes, yes, we've had it for, it was dated May twenty one.
I think that can gross us for this.
Yes.
I'm not seconded.
Tell me, that's a long. There is.
We have, we have, it's long over there.
Yeah, we approved it.
Yeah.
I'll make that one.
To pull it from.
You have a recommendation.
It can be paid from council or art funds, I mean, it is for the renovations.
I might as well use the art of funds. We're gonna push it up.
Yes.
We're gonna pay that.
Yeah. Can I get a motion to pay Baker Tilly twenty two thousand five hundred eighty three dollars and some change out of the ARPA fund?
You said one two, I thought it was twenty one.
Twenty one thousand five eighty.
Yes, right, thank you, twenty one thousand five eighty three and some change, ten cents. Out of the ARPA fund, Dale. Second, Denise, all in favor? Hi, six oh.
Okay. And sit on envoy. Sit on.
Got it, is that? We got these.
So that's roughly two hundred thousand dollars.
And ninety two thousand two seventeen twenty five.
So we have a total of what, what it was up until our original date that we said we paid for, it's another put in invoice.
I was saying it was that first, and that was in May, four hundred and thousand.
The one forty three?
Yeah.
That's right, to me, that's what I.
That was the first invoice that we got, and it is, it says period two five thirty one twenty four. On that invoice.
As much as I hate to have to pay that bill. But you're right.
I think, maybe comfortable paying the one forty three nine thirty eight, out of our, when we said stop. You know, if they, maybe that's when I call it later or something.
And I went through those reports this morning before we got here. That hundred forty three thousand gives you the thirty twenty eight, whatever it might be, but it really doesn't say what it's for. You know, I'm okay, we need to tell me what it's for, and then the forty eight thousand, that's after the fact. And the hundred forty three thousand, we set that a month, two months ago in a meeting right here, and we was, we met and enjoyed meeting that died for a hundred forty three thousand.
And the invoice for forty eight thousand, it says period two seven ten of twenty four. So I would assume it's from June one to seven ten, so that was after your motion.
Yeah, exactly. So if we pay a hundred forty three thousand, we're gonna get a call from Mr. Envoy?
Well, a hundred thirty of that is
How many?
And a hundred forty eight, forty three thousand, a hundred thirty of that is Architura. So he will be paid.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know.
That's sound.
Marasco was what? That's all, that's all into that, I don't know what it is, Marasco, it's in there. There's a done bill for Ritter?
No, no, that's.
That's totally separate.
We have Architura, JR Kelly was four thousand, and Marasco twenty, their attorneys four thousand, and then envoy is about thirty three thousand three hundred three hundred four. Or thirty three thousand four hundred.
So what pay a hundred forty three thousand for that? Well, we decided to pay that one forty three. And then make a point to Architura that we are still concerned about forty eight thousand. I mean.
Or if you continue on after we have the public meeting.
Well, when you look at, when you look at envoy.
Part of it, yeah.
Yeah, in June.
It doesn't, I just tried to back into what the difference would be, and I can't figure it out, but it's forty two thousand was, or forty eight thousand two seventy eight is what was July tenth, but only eleven thousand one hundred five dollars envoy should have been, it's not clear.
Were we at a rate?
Yes, we're playing dumb, because they're just kind of, not there.
We know the share eleven thousand one hundred five was on, entered after that, and then I would say some Architura, because he had to finish the drawings as per the commissioners.
Told you to continue, we're in line, yeah.
I mean, we will have those drawings, but.
Yeah. Well.
I would want a motion to pay the one forty three nine thirty eight forty out of. This early when we said we were.
Right.
We wanted to stop.
So can I get a motion to pay a hundred forty three thousand nine hundred thirty eight dollars and forty cents out of the ARPA funds? Denise, can I get a second? So Dale, can I get a vote?
Hi.
Six oh.
Six oh, okay. Is it agreeable to have that checked today instead of waiting till the next meeting?
Yeah. Get it paid.
Because I already paid all.
Yeah.
Okay. It was.
Okay, do we have anything else on the table?
That forty eight thousand.
Yeah, well, we're gonna get some explanation on that.
I think that's all. I, I do, I have to say.
Yeah, go ahead.
I do want to mention on our events, we have to have that money obligated, not appropriated by December thirty first, so we need to, otherwise it's gonna go back.
Which means it has to be under contract.
Yes. It's something we've got to work on.
I think for the next budget meeting that we have, if you can give us a printout of the example that was left, that would be helpful.
I, I.
Figure it out.
But yeah. It kind of went through the auditor's email, and a guy from Baker Tilly said obligated means under contract, so.
Like, they covered bridges, he was gonna get that.
Recovered the bridge.
It's coming out of Kimbridge. And that would not be an ARPA.
Yes, I understand that.
Okay, yes, it's coming out.
And I've been down there. Occasionally, well, they're moving right along, right, they're moving right along, pictures, and it's gonna, yeah, it's gonna be okay. It'll take a minute, the two guys are doing it.
They're working, in fact, the engineers are coming in today to look at it two o'clock again, and unfortunately they found some termite damage. It was minor, I, I would say minor, compared to all the other things we've had, but they're going to talk about the size of the board, say, of the water, of the water. We're moving on, so hopefully we'll have it completed by the end of October.
Well, Daniel Curdsey will be there today.
Yes.
He will. He takes one, two, five.
I cannot be there today, Warner has a doctor's paperwork, but two o'clock, two o'clock today is the bridge, Kurt will be there, Kurt will be there, be ready if you could get up. Many months ago. Henry will be there.
Okay. Department heads.
Wait a minute.
Oh, sorry.
On pause and clause, I'm gonna go to the council meeting in Hillsborough tonight, you're in ready tonight, and I'll ask them at the end, if they feel like they're covered. And if they do, I'll call. And then the landowners are gonna, I don't know, Paul, so, also they're not part of the county, I don't.
I think we've been down this route before. They don't consider Hillsborough town, Harley County, it's a town, and they want money from the towns too.
Do they cover Kingman? I mean, I mean, I know they don't cover the city of Kingman, city of that, no.
I think so.
Pause and clause, they cover the county from what we have in contact, pause and clause is not in contact, are still with coming, Hillsborough, Petersburg, Malat, Kingman, it's all town based, I can speak on a lot. It's by case by case, so we don't want to get into the contractors, it costs too much money for the little town of Malat to have it. So we're gonna contract with them for case by case, go case by case. So depending on the, the dog or the type of what's going on, it would be hundred fifty to two hundred dollars. So I do know like out in the county, that's what pause and clause covers, in the little cities, they do not. Kingman, we have to call the, the town board, Hillsborough, we have to contact the town board if we want pause and clause to come in there and take the, take the annual. Or the deputies will contact Officer Rainey, doesn't need to be Rainey, because he's the marshal there for Hillsborough, and see what needs to be done. So that's where we're at in dispatch with pause and clause, and how we have to contact pause and clause for who they service and what they do.
That's helpful. But it's not just Hillsborough, it's a lot.
Does, does their contract say Hillsborough?
It says for the county.
But it says specific Hillsborough.
No, that's not, it says for county, like Albon six fifty, seven fifty, that's county, that's not in all the little cities, so whatever's incorporated, unincorporated, or regional counties, but I can do it.
Well, she's going to, at our next council meeting, our budget meeting, which is nineteenth, she's gonna have a breakdown of what is remaining at the ARPA. She's gonna have a breakdown of what is remaining of the ARPA funds, so we'll be able to discuss it. On the nineteenth.
I just wanna make sure we keep a handle on that, our money, you know, we can't look at it, do something else with it. Remember, we had some thought about that. And you start nickel diamond out here somewhere, you lose sight of what we really wanna do with that. Anyway.
Anybody have anything else? I'm hearing nothing, we'll start with Department heads, Dana. You're good, Darth.
So I dropped you guys an email, uh, showing you a breakdown of our overtime. Went ahead and made out, uh, a report for you guys to look at today, it's not the full report. Um, the report I sent to you guys, uh, showed. Um, E pay period as of Friday, that would have been the day sixteen. So it reflects all the way out to pay sixteen. So the sheet is coming around to you, um. I did not print all sixteen off, I printed a few off just to kind of go through and show you some of the numbers. Uh, these numbers were given to the commissioners, um, but I did add some things to it afterwards.
So. Darth can I ask a question? Oh, yes, Darth, we approved sixty thousand dollars.
Yes.
And so let's start there. And that sixty thousand dollars, just say that sixty thousand dollars for what period of time?
That'll cover three more pay periods. If you go by the numbers, which we're. So, uh, looking at this, um. What I, so part of these numbers in here, um, Colleen and, and Kim, either one of them, they put together some numbers. And put a spreadsheet, I don't know if that was shared with you guys, that's in here and I'll explain that to you where they're at. But if you look at, I did the first pay period, it's all the full-time employees. Um, and then the first, the column that has the green, that is representing the hours, their normal overtime hours. What I mean is, you remember I told you, um, they work, uh, there's seven, there's twenty six pays, seventeen of those pays, they work. Have forty hours overtime, remember one week they work two days, the next week they work three days. And then there's nine pay periods, they work, they have sixteen hours overtime, they work two days one week, two days the next. So when you look at them, the green, that is representing the hours they would have gotten that pay period. And then the, the pay that they would have received. And then the totals are at the bottom. The actual overtime hours and the actual pay, and the red, those numbers came from the spreadsheet that Colleen gave to me. Um, and then the overall in blue, uh, showing is accumulated. So basically they, they take the actual hours and they'll accumulate that, then it shows accumulation over the period of time. Over all the periods of the pay periods. The last column, that was something I added, uh, afterwards, in the commissioners meeting, I did not have that number. Uh, I felt like that, all those two columns would compare to the overall total overtime hours. And what was paid to see, kind of apples to apples, so you can see what the numbers are. Uh, down in the bottom left corner, what's in the purple. Remember, we started this new pay, December seventeen, uh, we were down two paramedic spots for a period of time. Um, so that's reflecting those two paramedic spots that were open. So there was eighty hours during this pay period, you figured their overtime on that, that was three thousand seven twenty, you had that. There was a potential that we would have paid out that twenty two five ninety six instead of the eighteen eight seventy six. Now, obviously, if you go to the red, that is actually what we paid out in that pay period. Okay? Any questions, what you on that so far? Okay, um.
Which is, that pay period, which is the amount of weeks time, is that a, what, is that a month?
That's two weeks. The next page basically is showing you, only difference is, uh, obviously. The normal overtime hours are gonna change according to how rotation works. Okay, and then down at the bottom, those two paramedic spots were equal to fifty six hours of overtime added to that. Which would reflect and change that. Okay? So, uh, this went along for four pay periods. Page three is page five, it'd be page three and five. We were, what the challenge we ran into is trying to find those medic spots, we tried to advertise Facebook, we tried to do the state level site. We were not able to get, get off of that. We ended up ending it, it was like ZipRecruiter, wings, you know, indeed, and that's where we got the hits on, uh, paramedics. To apply for the job, uh, we went, um, we had as far as an individual person in Texas apply for the position. Uh, he first originally told us he was gonna move. I don't know what happened, he backed out and never did move. Um, but we ended up getting two medics out of that to fill those two twenty four hour spots. So, um, but then we started in February, February the twelfth, they started on February twelfth. That's when we started the twelve hour truck. Were able to fill the two empty spots, but we still had two twelve hour paramedic spots open. Um, we were back at the same challenge, some of them, there was not, um, paramedics out there that wanted to work twelve hour shifts. We kept trying, we tried to advertise again, just nobody was interested in that twelve hour shift. So that's what that pay five reflects, is now we've filled those two twenty four hour paramedic spots, but the twelve hour was open. In that report I sent to you, it'll, it goes all the way out, uh, it'll show these numbers all the way out. I did not print those off, but if you go to the very last page. This reflects a sixteen, which was as of this last Friday. So, uh, if you look at the actual hours, uh, this is the total actual hours that were paid out. This is the actual pay. The overall overtime hours, and this is where we're sitting right now as we speak, in the blue. On the pay received. And then if you look at the normal overtime I received, uh, paid received, um. I, one thing I did not add, I wanted to add in there, if you take the numbers that were in the purple. And add them in. And then this is where you would get three seventy six, five ninety six, that is where we would be if all spots were filled. Barring, nobody takes any time off. So there's about a forty thousand dollar difference between what we paid out. And what we would have if we didn't have, if we had all the spots filled.
I have a question. Is there always overtime?
Yes. Now, I will say that you guys remember when, um, Patty came in. Um, the, the way they pay now is the, the full amount, but she did have a proposal on the table. That we could reduce some overtime, um, and it's called, it's what they call modified Kelly Day. So how it works out is each shift, every three months. So typically like A shift, like this month they'll work nine days, next month they'll work nine days, the third month they'll work ten days. Okay? The months they work ten. You would give them that, not that one day off, which would put it back to nine days, would cut a little bit down on the overtime. Would help with the overtime, I think it was like over a hundred hour, like around a hundred hours per employee to potentially get down. The problem you have is, is you're gonna have to have backfill. You gotta fill in somebody into those spots. So either number one, you do it part-time people, or it's open to the full time. Cause you gotta fill that back in. To, to, to cover that, you know, because if you give, you know, two or three people off within that shift, that day off, you know. You gotta fill it back in. So in turn, you hope, fingers crossed, that you have enough part-time people within your group, which we're gonna talk about here in just a minute. That they'll pick that days up. But if they don't, then that leaves that position vacant, so then who's gonna pick it up?
So you have a pool of people that are willing to do the overtime.
Full, full time and part-time, yes.
Need someone, then whoever wants to take the.
And there's, where's the challenge is, you know, a question came up about, you know, um, part-time, you know, people applying. You know, and that, which I'll talk about in a minute, I looked this morning, I have twenty five people in my part-time pool. This last week, I had a guy go out on a medical emergency and I had a lady go out on family emergencies. We went through all twenty five people. Zero signed up.
So that, what do you do, do you and Jeff hop in the truck?
Either we hop in or we have to pull a full-time person in and go. Well, it's really not a pool. Yeah, and it, and it, the thing you have to look at is this pool, I call it pool of people, they all work a full-time job somewhere else. So it's not like some, they're just home, these guys work at another ambulance service, the fire department. Some of them are holding two jobs and mine is the third job. And so therefore, you know, when you go down through there and I sent texts out individually, can't work, I'm looking somewhere else, I'm on duty this day. And that's why I got, if you broke your pool down, let's say you have these twenty five people, if we broke it down into three different tiers. And tier one was the pool. That you were most likely to be able to pull people from. Maybe you have that pool. Maybe four, if we had that. It's just, you know, a lot of times the way it falls, that's what we run into, is it just, and we are continuing trying to fill that. Uh, you know, the part-time pool, but there's challenges that I face, so one of the times that I face is, number one. I have to look at. Do they have a record? You know, um, are they a employee that we want? The other thing I ran into, some I ran into about three years ago, was with our, our vehicle insurance. EMC, who covers our vehicle insurance, um, they frown upon, almost don't even want us to. I can't hire anybody under the age of twenty five. Because of the way, the way it breaks in the, you know, the, um, the premiums. So it puts a challenge on me, is number one, I have to make sure those, and, and most people are applying, are from the age of eighteen to twenty five. That's who's applying for the job, and so what I ran into is, number one, I gotta make sure they have the clean record driving, if they don't. EMC won't cover them. And therefore I can't put them in an ambulance if they're not being covered on her insurance.
So Darth, one of my questions was, when we were going through the whole process of increasing the pay, and who was that first pay period?
Uh, would have been, we start December seventeenth, so the first payment come out was twelve or something about.
One of my questions that I asked at that time was, if we up the pay, would that solve all your hiring problems? And I was told, yes, and my next question was, what would be the next thing? That you would be seeking, and it was retirement plans and things of that nature, so. So what's the gap between, yes, we're gonna be able to hire at this rate that you're gonna approve? And that not occurring?
Where, so. The simple answer, it's gonna, it's taking time, basically, um, and I, where I go with that is, is, it's, it's gonna take time to get to that point. And I think I had said that, yes, it would, because it would make it more enticing for people to come and apply, um. We're probably gonna have to eat the words a little bit, people didn't come as quickly as what Jeff and I thought they would. But they are starting to show up and starting to turn in applications. Um, the other thing we read, one of the things that we have, we have now filled one of twelve hour trucks, we have a paramedic on and an EMT. The other second truck has an EMT on it, uh, there is an open spot right now on that, you know, on that truck. The lady that's on the twelve hour truck, she's presently an EMT. She's going through the advanced EMT course as we speak. Our intentions is, once she has completed and successfully passed, she can slide into that advanced. Slot, we can hire an EMT for that, and then that will be filled, then all spots will be filled.
You understand what, what you're saying though?
Right, um, at the time, yes, we felt that where we was on the mind wise. That this would make it more enticing, people would come in, um, we are starting to see that, uh, more and more. People, you know, were getting applications, uh, more than. And it's a process, you know, we have to interview them, we have to go through an extensive background check with them, you know, we have to do a direct screen. You know, all those things, which takes time, but you knew that when I asked the question.
Yeah, right.
Right, that, that, yeah, I mean. But I don't know if I'm answering your question, you know.
I'd like you to address, I'm curious, when you talk about these twenty five, would you say part-time people? But they have, for, you know, one, maybe two other jobs, and this is the third, so those, I don't consider those part-time people. I consider those temporary or folks or some, they're not guaranteed in and out. So my question is, when we are giving this much overtime, and we have to cover the shifts, I understand that. That's saying, we don't have enough people. So, why aren't we, can we look at, I don't know, you tell me, making ten of those. Part-time, true part-time people with twenty hours, you know, or something, to cut down, you know, if we're paying part-time people. Normal wage versus time and a half to these full-time. It's gonna save us a lot of money, and in that situation, would some of those people say, hey, this is my second job now? Cause I know I'm gonna get twenty hours, not my third job that I'm gonna have to give it out to Kingman. You know, I, I mean, when you're having this much overtime over and over and over, that says we don't have people.
Right. And then, and that, and I think, I think the first thing is, is I think you're gonna start seeing now, we're starting to fill those positions, overtime's gonna go down. But, just sort of dream. Because what you got run into is your vacation time, your personal time, your medical emergency time, all that, it's on plan. The problem, the challenge you can run into that is, is there's not people out there in that pool that you can pull and do guarantee twenty hours. That's the challenge that you run into, you might pull one, but you're not gonna have about ten people come in and say. I don't have another job, I'll guarantee I can give you twenty hours a week. It's just not, it's not there.
It's not enough.
And what, it's, it's. It's diff. It's different than, and I'm not trying to go over here to the grocery store, most of the time. You want to say is, is there's so much different, you know, certifications, there's licensing, a lot of these people will have full-time jobs somewhere else.
But I, I mean, with this amount of overtime, if we can't find those part-time, then we'd be better off hiring more full-time people.
Right.
And not paying this much overtime, I mean, if you pay a full-time person, normal wages versus time and a half, you're gonna save money. I mean, these charts, I mean, I'm not an operations person, these charts to me look like we don't have enough people, we should not be paying six hundred. Extra overtime hours every pay year.
Right.
That's crazy.
Well, but if you look at the number over, you're not paying six hundred, you're only paying, you're only paying eight, five hours extra overtime. Or actually, five ninety two to six thirteen on page sixteen, that's what you're paying the difference between. So you're only paying thirteen or twenty nine hours.
Look at Addy and say, we've got it, with those other schedules, then that's.
Right, the six hundred and thirteen is what the actual are, but if you look at the normal, that's five hundred ninety two. So if you look at the difference, that's only eighteen hour difference, or twenty one hours difference, it's not six hundred and thirteen.
That goes back, that's, I think, the schedule needs to be looked at.
Right, I mean.
But if you look at the accumulation of overtime hours for.
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand, almost eleven thousand hours of actual overtime currently, is this a current, I think, week sixteen? You know, I realize there has to be overtime, there's no way around it, but I'm like Denise. There's a problem here, and I don't know what the solution is, but I would think you would be money ahead to hire extra help. And cut down on some of these overtime hours, I mean, this is just getting so out of control. That it has to be reined in budget-wise, there's no way around it, someone's got. That it has to be reined in budget wise, there's no way around it, someone's gotta get a lasso on that and. Pull it back because we can't sustain this type of overtime. There's just no, I mean, we just can't. I don't know how you guys feel, but that's my thought.
Would you fill that? Would you try to fill up both? You know, you gotta, you gotta have in that ambulance. The advanced paramedic, you gotta have John Bellman there.
We tried very best to have everybody try to stand staff, you know, staff with a paramedic or advanced EMT. Sometimes it doesn't always work out that way, but the majority of the time, there's a, there is a paramedic on there for truck. Actually, yeah. But if you look at these numbers, when we start talking about this last November, December. Running these numbers out, we're pretty close. We're, we're gonna be, where I told you guys, we're gonna be in over five seventy five to six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in overtime. Where we're at, and I think we're gonna be, we're gonna be close when you run these numbers out.
So Garth, you know, when I look at them. And you have to fill that truck and so on. And when they come in from a run. How long have they been out? I know it would vary.
On the hours, they're probably out.
We get some rest, I mean, because I'm looking at people work forty hours. And they're out there running in that ambulance. And the pressure on those people are high. We'll take care of other people, David. So I look at forty hours, where are they getting that rest? Are they, I see overtime hours, I see somebody here at forty hours, and they, they on that overtime list is pretty high, when are they resting?
So typically what they do is, is for the Beersburg station, what they do is, is they rotate runs. So if I was up for the first round, I will do, I'll come back. The second truck will take care of the second, will do the next call, so I would have a rest in between those calls. Um, usually the calls last between two to three hours, if they're on where they transport. Uh, if they're transported local, they could be done hour, hour and a half at the most. But then they, there was a rest period for the Beersburg station. Now where the challenge is, the Attica, Attica station with only one truck, majority of the time. Um, they don't get that rest. Um, now when we move the fourth ambulance up there, when it's out on a call. They typically try to rotate, you know, calls to give them a little bit of rest. So, I mean, they get, they get a little bit of rest, it depends on the call. The volume of that day, if it's a slow day, then they have the rest. If it's a busy day, they don't get that recovery.
So when you pull into your pool, with twenty five part time. Do you have to look for a paramedic?
It's a bit of a open, if it's an EMT spot that's open, we go EMT, and there's a paramedic, we look at the paramedic first.
Is that true, highly paramedic, or on EMT? How, how's that?
Do what now?
The number of people that are paramedics and characters.
No, EMTs are double from the paramedics, I mean, it's like two to one.
If you're gonna hire somebody a paramedic, and you're looking at a full salary, what are position may be, right?
Yeah.
You gotta insure.
Yep, gotta insure them, and you're, you're still looking at. You know, I'm talking ahead, you're still looking at eighty thousand dollars.
They've been.
And then you're looking at another twenty some thousand for benefits, so you're still on the hundred thousand first. Now you're, you know, you're, I think you're at a hundred and twenty, or something. Somewhere in that, you know, doesn't there are salaries in that?
And that's a paramedic? Advanced.
And that makes a lot of difference when you start pooling, because those people are not there, that's why you got that class.
Try to help offset that a little bit, you know, so that if, if a paramedic, you know, advanced and paramedic are together as partners. Paramedic takes off, we don't necessarily have to look for that paramedic, another paramedic can fill it, we can fill with an EMT. Which in turn will be a cheap, lesser dollar, paying less, less on the dollar. You know, to that EMT to cover, because that advanced EMT can still do a lot of advanced, uh, PLS procedures.
Total procedure, or EMT, a paramedic does, that you'd like to have on that truck?
Say that again.
So if you have an EMT.
Yes.
That's on that truck.
Yes.
Without a paramedic. He can do some.
An EMT can do some things, yeah. Now, the advanced EMT can do almost, almost equivalent to. Paramedic, there are certain things they can't do, but a lot of the calls they can, they can cover and take care of. You know, as an advanced EMT, that's why we're training them to this level to help offset. Or not having to dig into always trying to find paramedic. But fill up a paramedic that's ongoing on vacation or sick. We can, if either there's an advanced EMT with them, we can find an EMT to work with them.
How much notice do you have to fill?
Um, we have it set up right now, when they wanna ask for time off, uh, we ask for a minimum of forty five days. Uh, anything less than forty five days, they have to find their own coverage. We set that because our schedule's set out thirty days in advance, so we set the time of forty five days. Now, it depends, you know, if there's a family emergency, a personal injury, it depends on when they call in. I try to tell them that they're sick, call me sooner than later, you know, so that I can get a notice out quick enough to see if I can find somebody. But, you know, if they wake up at three in the morning and they're sick, it's supposed to be work six the next morning. I mean, there's no, I don't have that control.
All right, what else you got, Garth?
One quick question, I just, just for clarification, so when, some of them are. Say, normal overtime hours, and then actual, and their actual overtime hours are actually less than they're scheduled for, is that just because of vacation and sick time? Or is that because of the fact that you wanna take my shift?
It's vacation or sick.
Okay. Just wanna make sure you don't just say, take my shift and another person's getting it.
You, you will see there's, there's, there's two or three of them that have large amount of numbers of overtime. I, I know there's concerns that maybe they're picking up more than what they should, maybe taking advantage of it, if you wanna call it. Um, if you look back history wise, these individuals, when you look at back in twenty twenty three, when we were on the old system, paying. And even twenty twenty two, they were picking up the same amount of hours. Um, so they're not picking up hours to, just to pick up hours, uh, they're, you know. They do sign up for it, we look at it, sometimes they're the only ones to sign up for that shift. So it's either we fill it with them, or it's over. And so that's where you see a couple individuals in there, and they have a lot more hours. And, you know, they're available and they're able to do it. Um, some of the other full time people, they don't want extra hours. So they're only gonna put in what they want, they're only, they're only gonna put in their hours that they want. Or what they're obligated, or what's their time, and that's what they're gonna put in. As you go down through there, some of the, some employees do pick up some hours, as you will see. So, um, like I said, there's two of them, I, you can see it's plain as day, they have a lot of hours in. But they also look at it as, I don't think necessarily they're taking advantage of it. I think they're looking at helping to make sure we have trucks available, you know, for that. And so, uh, I know, like, some questions come up about, you know, part time, as I explained. Um, we're, we're constantly trying to hire part time people. Um, like I said, uh, we're at twenty five, um, I can keep hiring, it's, I could have forty in it. You know, and I've had, I've had upwards of over thirty, you know, within my group. And I went down through all thirty of them, and all thirty of them are not available to cover a shift. And it gets set up, it's, it's hard to wrap your head around it, but. I used to work at the IGA, and I know how part, you know, somebody come in, part time, you could pull from them, and you, you, you knew you were gonna get twenty hours. It's totally different, this is set up way totally different than, than, you know, a factory, or working in a grocery store, or whatever, it's, it's totally different. And so it's tough. Um, I know that some concerns, uh, you know, came up about, you know, um, employees knowing about their recruit time. Um, I have an open door policy. I never, in the twelve years that I've been in this position, never neglected to tell the employees what their recruit time was. Um, they, I, they'll come in, I'll give them their information when they want it. Um, I also feel it's a little bit of their responsibility to, they know what time, time they're asking off. If they are not sure, I have always given them their time, what, how many. Vacation days they have, or personal time, or sick time, what do they have? Uh, we will change that, we will post that every month of them and make sure they know that. Um, and we do have a schedule program, we can't put it in the schedule program because they do it on pay time off, they do it by hours. Not by days, the county runs it by days, but they do not allow it by hours. So therefore, um, but I have never not. And I don't, I've not seen, I know a concern come up about not seeing it in the check, how it works, I haven't seen the way the new checks are set up. I'm assuming, and what I assume means, it will show their regular pay. Their hourly rate or pay, their amount, and then it'll show their overtime. In that regular pay, so if I work two days this week, okay, and I, I work today and Thursday, cause that's how my rotation would work. If I took Thursday off, by FLSA rules, we have to pay them the whole twenty four hours to take off. So today I get twenty four at regular pay. Thursday's gonna be regular pay, you can't count it as overtime. And that is from ADI, cause I asked her to make sure, so forty eight hours will be paid at regular pay. So and I would take it, and their check will say, regular pay forty eight hours, that's what it is. I don't ever remember seeing in my check ever showing. How many vacation days I took off in the twenty years that I've been here.
We don't put them on.
Yeah, we don't, so it's not show, so the way they know is Kim and I, Kim communicates with me, she sends an email. She shows me what she's got calculated for everybody. We go through, there's our recruit sheet, it gets turned in every pay period for each employee. We make sure that those balance, if they don't, Kim and I look at it, a lot of times it may be my mistake, and we fix it. But it's an open door policy, that they can come in and they can ask those questions. And so I, I, you know, I, I.
What else you got, Garth?
Um, that was pretty much there, uh, just a second, uh, I wanna let you know that, um, the new, we did receive our first ambulance last Friday, the new one. It is in service, it's in Attica. Uh, it sounds like we will probably get the second one. Wednesday of this week, probably, we'll, we'll go and pick it up and bring it back and put it in service. Uh, they talked a little bit about the remount, I know, Colleen, I told you last week at the commissioners meeting, we thought October. Uh, it looks like it may be November first to December. Uh. He's, here we are, he's in the same boat I am, he is down for employees. He did hire one, but he's very short, and so he's trying his best to get us on the priority list and get it in quicker, but. Sounds like it'll just, November, December.
Garth, does other counties have the same schedule as Fountain County?
Yes. So now, now, um. Warren County does not, there is a little different, um, they basically work four days and a five day stretch. Basically, and then they're off four days. Uh, Park County works a twenty four, forty eight, like we do, so they were twenty four on, forty eight off. Benton County works a twenty four, forty eight. But. I'll say it, you look at their hourly rate, once they pay their medics versus us. There's a big difference, huge difference.
Cause every day we're not talking with you, you pull, uh, your help, your part time help into other counties.
Yes.
As far as Boon County?
Uh, I pull the fires from Morgan County, I've gone and worked for Morgan County coming in, uh, Park County. Um, Clay County. They come from Maryland, they come from all different areas.
How about Marion?
Uh.
Minneapolis area.
I probably got one or two from there, yes.
How about your pay?
Um, as what we pay them.
You know, compared, very, compared to us.
We're actually very comparable to them, we're, we're neck and neck. But if you compare us to Park County and Benton County, we're light years ahead, my, my last.
Thank you, Garth.
You guys have any questions on that, so you, yes.
Um, but overtime. You have, you said sixty thousand for the next three pays.
I'm hoping so.
So, do we need to do an additional since on advertising?
Probably do.
How much are you?
Um, running the numbers out, I told, I kind of you guys back in March, I gave you a preliminary number of five hundred and two. You know, we split it, we did the two fifty, and then we would look at it August, September. Um, looking at, kinda crunching the numbers, you know, a little bit last week, we're probably in the upper two hundred thousand.
To the end of the year?
Hundred, hundred, forty thousand dollars, looking for a reason.
So do you wanna go to the, or you wanna get back with me?
I would say, I think we need to go two hundred. And then, because I, if you remember, I said five hundred, if you, when we did the two fifty, there'd be two hundred and fifty left. I think we may have some left and some of the other line items move around.
He just transferred sixty or well.
Yeah.
And then that'll give you, with that, it was at four fifteen. So.
Buy that kind of, buy it and out of the sixty, so that still leaves me about fifty four, cause we had two hundred and ten in there as of last Thursday. And then we did four fifteen, so we're gonna be in the negative by.
We are.
And then that would, buy of that, wow, that sixty's not gonna go to that.
Right, so.
Which I think will, I think two hundred will probably cover it.
Okay.
And that would put us at. I have a little bit, sixteen, that's gonna put us at the total amount, that's gonna put us pretty close to where my figures was, maybe just a little high, but.
That three seventy six, and that extra additional.
The three seventy six represents their normal overtime.
Yeah.
The four fifteen is actual, the four fifteen in the blue. The four fifteen, that's what we're at right now.
Right now.
Yes.
And we need an extra two fifty.
Two hundred. Because we moved sixty over.
Sixty.
And that was because of the vacant spots. We had vacant spots for so long, we could move that amount over. Any questions? There's a lot, a lot of numbers.
So, thank you. Was there any other department heads back there? Jenny's.
Jenny.
Margaret, you got it.
I'd kind of let you know that, um, we're going to be preventing the new building lease for our department, uh, for the commissioners. Nothing has changed, the same payment and same services, everything remains the same.
Hey, just a renewal.
Just a renewal, so, you know, if you have any questions, you know.
One year lease, how long a year, Steve?
Five year lease.
Five year.
With a six month, uh, early termination.
Okay.
So that's kind of the, you know, the state status on the payment.
What was it? Jenny. How much was the renewal, it stayed the same, you said?
Stayed the same, thousand five hundred and eighty a month, yeah. And that covers utilities, the only thing we pay is, um, internet, building maintenance, no removal, it covers all of that.
Thanks, Jenny.
Are you satisfied, were you up?
Um, we're not.
I'll go let you go.
Uh, yeah, I know. Um, I think there's other priorities in the county, we're pretty pleased with where we're at at the moment, you know, we can make things work, yes. Yeah, I think we're okay.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thanks, Jenny.
Anyone else back there? Hello there, how are you?
General Sheriff's Officer from County. I just had to, I don't spend a lot of it in my, in my job. But the price of everything has went through the roof. In the last three years, I've had to transfer funds from one account to another account, just to keep it. So I, I just asked for a small amount to increase on certain items, through line items. I don't spend, I do this for the public there, I use my need, rest of the state's.
Great, thank you. Public comments. Mr. Green.
You're a paving strand town runner.
I noticed last week at, went out to the, by the cemetery, they milled that. And I know that was great, so I called Jason. He said that's where our road stops. It doesn't stop, you own the bridge. You know, at the north side of the bridge, that we own north of there, you own the bridge and up to the top of the hill. This is like running the bike, he said that's where they're stopping. So I called my, my estimator with milestone, with wind and crossings, Kenny Walker. And John Walker, who's your estimator, and he works for Ken, told him the problem. Said, this is gonna be like running the five K and stopping five feet from the line. You know.
What'd they think?
Well, they're working, they're working. I just knocked Mark Graham. I said, yeah, when I was going by, I said, Mark, why don't you measure that, hold shot. You know, how much it is. But I think if you're string down low, you string down less.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, if you're going nine miles, stopping two hundred, two hundred and fifty feet short. Just doesn't make any sense. I don't ask for a lot, I don't think. Um, so Brian, you go up to the bridge. I mean, it goes up to the bridge, we go to the bridge. And then the county owns the bridge, and then from there on. But Jason said they only have maintenance up to the top of the hill there to Dixie B. That's not all the string down road. So.
But we need a solution there, don't we?
I would like, like, you know, for, I mean, you're spending two million dollars on it. I'd like for him to consider, you know, milestone, we're, we're spending about four hundred thousand, which is not here. So, when can you get an estimate? Well, as soon as Mark measures it from cold shot, I think, I think they come up with an estimate pretty quick. You'll be in touch with Jason? Yeah, I, I can be in touch with Jason. I'm like, oh, no.
What? So, so let me, let me ask you a question. Who, who milled it?
Milestone.
Milestone milled it. Did they know that they weren't supposed to mill that and go that far? I mean, I know we own the road, but.
I think that's where they were supposed to stop.
Jason said that's where they're supposed.
Kelly.
Yes.
This is Jason.
Hi, Jason.
Hey, um. Our project limits are stopping there at Dixie B, and the reason it is, is because our road inventory map. From the state shows us at that intersection of Eleventh Street and Dixie B is where. The city takes over and the county takes over. The county is south of Dixie B, that's just what's showing on our road inventory map from the state.
We've never, we've never paved anything, milled or or paved anything, you know, south of the north side of the bridge.
The, the bridge is, yes, the county, the county takes care of the bridge, that's how, that's how it is in the, in the towns. Like up in Attica, Covington. Um. But, that's just going by what the, the county map says. That, that's where the pro, that's where the application. Was terminated at right there for the community crossings.
So how do we, how do we fix this, Jason?
Uh, I mean, I don't have the extra money to. Pay for that, so I, I mean, that's just what we were going by, was off the application.
So my concern is, is you have a build section of road.
Did they, Brad, have they been down to the bridge yet, milling?
No, they're about to grevelling probably at seventy-four by now.
Yeah. So they haven't milled down, they've pretty much stopped there at Dixie B where the project limits were on our application.
Yeah. That's where they stopped, that's why I'm here, because that's, that's not the county limits. It might be according to the math, but I don't have, we drew the math.
Well, that, yeah, I don't know, that's just what the, that's, that's from N dot, and that's where the application. Took the information from.
See, they never, they never, if I figured that on mine anytime, they never let me pave. North of the bridge, and when they paved it last, they ran onto the bridge, it looks like crap. And it needs to be taken off or paved to the north side of the bridge. So. I'm not saying we won't help participate in it, you know, I don't think we should, but I'm saying to make it look right, I think we need to.
Well, so they measured nine miles and they, that was it.
Yeah, so I left it off to two hundred and fifty feet or so.
That's because that's what the app, that's because they went off that map, and that's where the application. Shows that that's on the map, that's where the town type takes over and the county starts at Dixie B.
Yeah. Jason, who, this is Dale, we created the map.
Uh, this is, you, you can look on N dot's website, that's just, that's where we get our road inventory from. Um. For what we get paid for and what jurisdiction is.
So you say N dot created that map?
Yes, the state, that's, that's coming from the state website.
I think the thing to do, um, have you spoken to the commissioners about this, Brad?
No, no, I just found out Thursday or Friday when I called Jason.
I know there's a sense of urgency right now because they're there.
Uh.
Um, I think the thing to do is get ahold of Brenda and explain the situation and see what her thoughts are on it.
Sure.
Um, and go from there.
Sure.
I, I.
I'll, I'll have an estimate before the day's out.
Perfect.
Because Ken, Kenny Walker and John Walker are talking and.
Is Aaron here?
Yeah, yes.
Are you hearing the conversation, Aaron? Okay.
So can you, can you give, give an email to tell you what to?
Yes, yes, well, you send me an email and let me know what your estimate is, as well as get one to Aaron or Brenda or Tim.
Yeah.
Okay. That would be perfect, then we'll try and figure something out.
Well, it's probably just like right now.
Yes.
He does that, right? You know, but pay for that. We had to back up that line, so we gotta get the commissioners on, and it is something.
No, right.
And, and Milestone started this project about a month early, like I had sent you guys an email sa- saying that, and we were kind of caught off guard about that, so.
Yes.
Gonna look a little different if we don't do something.
Yeah, it's, it's like three hundred feet, I think. Correct me if I'm wrong, Brad, it's not very lo, it's not very far.
No, no, I think I told Jason, I told Kenny Walker, I said, we'll help out. The east side doesn't look very good, we'll, we can take our backhoe, cut that out and make that look better, so.
Okay, thanks, Brad, for bringing our attention to you. Anyone else? Jason, do you have anything for us?
No, that was it, just on, uh, string town. Like I said, they kind of. Started early and we weren't, we had a couple other projects that we needed to get done, so, uh, we're working with them on that. Other than that, everything's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jason, how much money you got? You, you're totally out of money on that grant, right? That's what you're saying.
On the grant, yes, Tom.
So we're, what was another name you done from your budget? We had a.
I've got some in by two minutes and some in road preservation that I'm still, uh, we're, we're. Going to finish up paving bone break, the last little section of bone break tomorrow or Wednesday, I'm sorry. Um. And then I'll have, I'll have a little bit, I don't know what the estimate's gonna be from Brad, uh, from Milestone. If Brad could get that to me, I'll see what we have in the budget, but that will be completely up to you. The council, the commissioners, however you guys want to handle that.
Jason, or Jason, um, Aaron, did you hear that?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you, Jason. I just wanna make sure where you were, if that came around. And we wanted to do that and everybody got together, that's all I'm looking at. Worth that money.
Just let me know how everybody'd like to proceed.
All right, thanks, Jenny, for me.
All righty. We shall move forward. To, uh, open the budget hearings. We're gonna open the budget hearings at ten twenty. We'll start with. Ms. Jordan. It's the last page of county general. Like reading.
Yes, like everyone.